Okay, here we go. All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's Board of Education meeting. The date is Tuesday, January 9th, 2024. I would appreciate that all you are here to turn off your cell phones as this meeting is being recorded. Ellen, can you please do our roll call? Yes, I will. Good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year. Ms. Carson, Callan Carson?
Here.
Mr. Carey?
Present.
Mrs. DeRoberts?
Present.
Mrs. Hernandez-Williams?
Here.
Mr. Riley?
Here.
Ms. Walters?
Present.
Mr. Weiner?
Here.
Mr. Lackavoli?
Here.
And cheerperson, Mrs. Granato?
Present.
All present. Thank you, Ellen. So tonight, June Riley will head us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Emmett, do we have student and staff recognition tonight?
Well, on this very stormy evening, we don't have anyone here in attendance. However, I'd like to turn it back to you, Madam Chair, to talk a little bit about the kid mayor and the kid chair that will be forthcoming.
Okay, I'm thrilled to. Well, I'm delighted to be speaking at the board meeting tonight during student and staff recognition. It's often my favorite part of the Board of Ed meeting when we hear from our amazing staff and students. And tonight, I want to throw out a challenge to our fifth and sixth graders. The town council and Board of Ed are leading a contest to find our kid mayor and kid chair from each school. The contest begins this Friday at Hamner School and then on to the other elementary schools during the month of January. At each school assembly, Ken Lesser and I will be presenting the challenge with a presentation that explains the system of government we have here in Weathersfield, highlighting the town council and the Board of Ed. Mayor Ken Lesser and I hope to inspire and challenge our fifth and sixth graders to tell us how they would run the government in town. What would they change and what would they want to add to make Weathersfield an even better community to live in and go to school in? This board is very excited to have the winners for kid chair sit on the dais for a meeting and read their award-winning essay. So each elementary school has a meeting to show off their award-winning kid chair. So please join me in cheering on all our young students and future leaders to take up this challenge and give us their best ideas and effort. And I also want to give a special thank you to Sally Distoli and Kristen Underhill for creating a fabulous presentation that Mayor Lesser and I will be presenting to the elementary schools. So thank you and good luck, everyone. All right, let's move on. And next on tonight's agenda is the approval of the minutes for the Board of Ed meeting on December 12th, 2023. Wow, it seems like years ago. Are there any corrections? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve these minutes?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Got that. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstain.
Okay, the minutes are approved. So is there anyone wishing on this stormy night to come up and make a public comment? Please come to the podium and state your name and address, and may I remind you that public comments are limited to five minutes. Seeing no one. Mr. Emmett, you have some communication for us tonight?
I do, Mrs. Granato. Thank you, and good evening again, everyone. Just a quick update with regard to illness data. We continue to monitor our illness rates across the district. We are currently in peak season for illnesses, and they are running the gamut, from COVID to RSV to flu to the dreaded norovirus. We've seen a little bit of everything. The CCHD reminds everyone to continue practicing good hand hygiene as the first line of defense in keeping germs and viruses at bay. The district still has COVID test kits. If parents are interested, just reach out to your school nurse, and we're certainly happy to provide those. Couple of other items this evening. Equity teams. We have equity teams across all of our schools, and today, each school came together from across the district, along with central office staff, for a professional development with our partners from the State Education Resource Center, or CERC. Our focus today was on the efforts of diversifying our workforce, and we're going to continue to work with CERC with three more sessions coming up over the remainder of this school year. In addition, you'll learn more about the district's BIPOC affinity group at the next Board of Education meeting. I'm pleased to report that the Youth Voices Count survey results have been completed. I'll be meeting with town staff, as well as the survey consultant next week to review data in advance of a presentation to you all on January 23rd. Next, the ad hoc building committee. We've had a couple of reschedules on our next date. Our next meeting date is January 18th. We are currently working on a plan to visit Pleasant Valley Elementary School in South Windsor to see what a new elementary school design looks like. South Windsor is happy to have us visit, and we're working now on confirming the date on which we will visit. So I'll certainly keep you posted, as well as everybody on the ad hoc committee with regard to that. And then also tonight, you see a few members of our staff in the audience. We'll have members of our curriculum and instruction team providing an update on the status of the work that the district is doing with regard to the science of reading. So it'll be a very interesting presentation as we continue to do this work. I also want to say, you probably all know, I know all board members know because you were informed yesterday, but Weathersfield was in the news yesterday, and again, sometimes we're not always in the news for the right reasons. Again, we're a district of about 3,600 students, and certainly mistakes were made, as they were yesterday. One of the things that I need to do as a superintendent is ensure that parents in the community are informed. So yesterday, when we got notice that this incident occurred in the morning, I had immediate contact with Siobhan O'Connor, principal at the high school. In addition to that, we have our SRO, Eric Knapp, who is in the building all day, every day, five days a week. So he commenced with the investigation. We also dispatched our Director of Security, Mike Bearball, over as well. I think it's important to make sure that we get the communication out. We anticipated it would draw media response, and media response, it drew. So again, I appreciated your patience with media as the fact we don't have a Director of Communications, per se. That person is me. So the opportunity to reach out to all four local television stations and provide the communication that was provided to all parents. So from this point moving forward, at this juncture, obviously, the district has a code of discipline. It has policies in place around student discipline, and we will be looking to apply those moving forward. So again, thanks for your patience, and again, I also have to give a special shout-out to our students who saw something and said something. That was critically important. They saw that something wasn't right. They immediately reported it to a teacher, utilized the wellness center, and we were able to respond immediately. So again, keeping our students safe is a top priority here in the Weathersfield Public Schools, so we'll continue that moving forward. And with that, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have one action item this evening. Matt Lackavoli, our Policy Chair, will you read the motion?
Yes. So a little bit of background, the Policy and Planning Committee met on December 1st to review and discuss 15 recommended policy updates. I'm not going to list them all individually. You've seen one, you may have them in front of you right now. Six in a row from 1,000 series having to do with community and board operation, seven in a row from 5,000 series having to do with students, one in a row from 6,000 series having to do with construction, and one in a row from 9,000 series concerning board bylaws. That being said, I move that the Weathersfield Board of Education approve those recommended policy updates.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? This is our second reading of them? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes. Thank you, Matt, and everyone. Okay, tonight, we do have a very important presentation. I'll let them get started on our K through 3 literacy. So thank you for being here tonight. Come on up.
All right. Good evening. Mr. Emmett, Madam Chair, distinguished members of the board. My name is John Campbell. I am the Instructional Supervisor for elementary curriculum here in Weathersfield. Tonight, I am joined by Robin Grenier, Reading Consultant from Hamner Elementary School, and Kirsten Gilberto, second grade teacher from Webb Elementary School and member of our K-3 Reading Resource Review Committee. And if you can say that three times fast with your mouth, you're better off than I am. These exceptional teacher leaders are here to help me share with you the updates in K-3 reading, teaching, and learning here in Weathersfield. Tonight, yes, tonight, we will speak to the recent changes in reading education that have been going on at a national and state level, and what we are doing here to continuously improve teaching and learning in the area of reading. We will share our current plans for the near future and potential cost implications that accompany this work. Debates about the most effective ways to teach children to read have been going on for nearly 100 years. They began with an argument over whether phonics instruction was necessary or if whole-word recognition was best. In the 1950s, the debate began to attract more widespread attention, and by the 1980s, it became so highly politicized, it was deemed "the reading wars." But what began as a debate between phonics and whole-word recognition has evolved to include areas of research that have emerged from many fields that investigate the process of how one learns to read. In the 2000s, the idea of emphasizing phonics and strategic meaning-making led to the introduction of the Balanced Literacy Approach, which was widely adopted by schools and districts across the country. This was followed by a movement calling for a systematic approach that focused on building background knowledge. Most recently, states across the country have begun establishing legislation to require districts to provide instruction that is grounded in this body of research referred to as the science of reading. In June of 2021, Connecticut passed a bill that would require the state to, the Department of Education, excuse me, to identify and approve at least five reading curriculum models or programs that address the critical areas of reading in kindergarten through third grade that are outlined by this science of reading research, which then must be implemented by all public school districts. This is the first time that Connecticut has legislated what resources districts must use in order to teach the standards. Until now, our state has told us exactly what standards we need to teach and use to drive our instruction, but the resources that we use has been left up to district Districts are now expected to adopt one of these programs and fully implement it in kindergarten through third grade by July 1st, 2025, so the beginning of the 2526 school So what's the science of reading? It is a wide body of research that encompasses studies from across disciplines, including developmental psychology, cognitive neuroscience, linguistics, and education, and that's just to name a few. This vast body of research provides evidence for how reading and writing develop in the brain and what students need in order to most successfully develop into proficient readers and writers. It names five key components: phonological awareness, phonics, fluency, vocabulary, and That research reveals that there are many aspects of language comprehension and word recognition that are required to all be in place in order for someone to become a skilled reader. That process is illustrated here by the graphic of Scarborough's rope. You can see that as each strand becomes woven among the others, the rope begins to take shape. But if you were to pluck away at any of these strands, the entire rope would become frayed and weakened. The research also reveals that our brains are not innately hardwired to connect all of these pieces. This makes the process of learning to read even more complex, and it requires instruction that is just as complex and systematic and explicit in order to forge the connections between the different parts of the brain in order to be successful. Over the past few years, we've made adjustments to our primary reading curriculum to address the critical areas outlined by this research. The units of study in phonics have been in place since before the pandemic, and when we returned to full in-person learning, the curriculum team identified the need for an explicit phonemic awareness program to support daily instruction in that critical area. We adopted Haggerty Phonemic Awareness Resources in the 2223 school year in all K-2 classrooms and in pre-K this year. We've added and emphasized the use of decodable readers and resources for differentiation and small group instruction at the primary level to support the phonics instruction. And we've revised our curriculum units to eliminate and replace strategies that were not supported by the research. We've established a K-3 Reading Resource Review Committee to thoroughly review and pilot materials that were approved by the state of Connecticut and select resources that best meet the needs of our students in Weathersfield. But most importantly, we've provided teachers in grades K through 6 with professional learning opportunities around the necessary shifts in practice and the research behind them. Materials are only a piece of what makes, a piece of the equation that makes teaching work. The professional learning around how to use those materials and the reasoning for the approaches and strategies that we use with students are critical. As teachers participate in this professional learning, they increase their understanding and their skills, and they try them out in their classroom, they refine them, they try them again. The process takes time, but in the end, the results are improved outcomes for all students. I'm going to have Robin come up and speak to you about the professional learning and reading that we've been doing with staff in Weathersfield.
Hello. So here at Weathersfield, we're very lucky to have many opportunities to work collaboratively and work together at many of our professional development days. Over the last couple of years, reading consultants and curriculum specialists have been paying specific attention to the reading changes and have focused on working through major shifts that need to happen in our instructional practices. We have been using a resource called the Shifting the Balance to articulate possible misunderstandings and new understandings based on the large body of research known as the science of reading. While we have provided professional learning to all K-6 teachers, during our collaborative and professional development times, we have worked closely with primary grade teachers to help incorporate these new strategies into their daily routines. Currently, reading consultants are continuing this professional development work with a new addition of the Shifting the Balance that focuses on strategies that are more relevant to the instruction through the upper grades, most recently, the specific attention to what researchers say about vocabulary instruction. As we learn more about these critical shifts in instructional practices, we share this knowledge with teachers so they can best align their daily instruction. Haggerty has been Weathersfield Public Schools' phonemic awareness curriculum resource since the fall of 2022. Our professional development allows us an opportunity to have consistent work time and collaborate on daily instruction, assessment, and make informed decisions moving forward. We have purchased and consistently worked towards funding and printing decodable readers for students. As we learn more about the shifts in reading instruction, teachers' knowledge has increased around best ways to use these tools to build foundational reading skills by focusing on phonics and decoding strategies. We have also been lucky enough to share some of the free resources provided by the University of Florida's Literacy Institute, UFLI, as they call it, an explicit and systematic phonics program that teaches students the foundational skills necessary for proficiency in reading. Last year, all K-2 teachers were introduced to the program and the free resources, including the decodable passages and decodable games, and we encourage teachers to use these to supplement the phonics curriculum already in place. This year, during our collaborative meetings, some of the lessons from the program have been shared, and we are encouraging their use for additional whole-group and small-group instruction. The format fits perfectly into the lesson structures that we provided professional learning around last year, known as the Explicit Phonics Framework created by the Six Gifs. With all this in place, we continue to meet regularly and collaborate to move our Weathersfield
Hi, I'm Kirsten Gilberto. I'm a second grade teacher at Webb Elementary School. I have the honor of sharing all of the hard work that the committee has done, so I hope I represent them well because they have worked tremendously hard. So I have the honor of sharing a tremendously impactful experience that speaks directly to the professional development and the professional knowledge that our WPS staff already holds. Michelle Boyd and Megan Copeland, a first grade teacher and her team partner at Emerson Williams, knew after our district-wide initial training that this shift in teaching reading made sense. So I wanted to give you a minute just to read part of this. Michelle specifically adopted a lesson structure from Shifting the Balance over six months. She emphasized explicit, targeted phonics teaching that encourages reading and writing connections. This shift in approach significantly improved the reading skills of students who initially struggled, with 11 students below benchmark at the start of the year, reducing to only four by the end on multiple measures. We have both continued using science of reading principles and structures that we have learned, resulting in student success and increased motivation for learning to read. We are excited that the district is moving in this direction and look forward to continuing our professional learning. The reason why we are sharing this experience isn't because, it's because that this isn't just happening at one of our elementary schools, but it is happening district-wide as a result of all the resources and training that we are receiving. Our K to 3 staff has the foundational knowledge and the resources, and we will be successful with whichever program best fits the needs of our students. So as you know, we have had a K to 3 reading committee for quite some time now, starting of last summer, June 2023. We have a very dedicated and knowledgeable committee of literacy specialists, K-3 teachers, special education teachers, to ensure that the programs that were presented to us by the state were a right fit for all stakeholders. The state initially released six approved curriculum models and programs. When we looked at these six programs, we decided to look at what strengths we had within our current design of balanced literacy instruction and highlighted areas of our relative weakness. Our reading consultants, our literacy specialists tirelessly vetted these programs to the bones to make sure that they supported those areas, but did not take away or replace what we were already doing very well. For example, our current writing model allows our students K to 3 to develop their writing skills through choice and building writing stamina, where some of the approved resources were lacking in both of those areas. So we drafted a vision statement that encompassed all of the non-negotiables that we believed our students deserved and needed to be truly successful, skilled and engaged readers and writers. I'm going to read it really quickly. It's not up there, but I thought it was very impactful and appropriate to read. So we believe that high-quality literacy instruction must be provided by educators who are all well-versed in the current body of research. This allows all students to participate actively in their learning as they develop literacy skills and strategies to become critical thinkers, consumers, and producers of language and text. Effective literacy instruction immerses students in rich and diverse literature while developing students' phonemic awareness, phonics, fluency, vocabulary, and comprehension, those five pillars, all while leveraging student choice to maximize motivation and engagement, challenging students to engage in authentic learning experiences, allowing them to apply their learning across a wide range of genres, contents, content and complexity of text in order to develop and expand their perspectives about the world. We use the vision of the graduate to help us. The two reviewed programs over the summer were ARC-COR and HMH Into Reading. We believe that these two programs had the necessary components, such as comprehensive phonics instruction and phonological awareness instruction, that would bolster our current instructional model. We are on year two of Haggerty for phonological awareness and know how comprehensive and structured and successful it is. We have seen the growth in our students' abilities to decode and encode words. Because HMH Into Reading released an updated foundational literacy structure, and it closely aligned with the Phonics Planner from Shifting the Balance, the text that we keep referring to, we decided to pilot a module that consisted of phonological awareness, phonics, reading, and writing. We found that this program better addressed the gaps identified than ARC-COR did, and our K to 3 teachers began piloting a module this past November. In December, the state announced additional approved programs, including a list of nine approved compendiums. I said that word right. A compendium is a combination of materials and resources that must be used collectively as a unit. This did make our committee relieved, in a sense, as we came to a close in our pilot and knew that there was things still lacking in certain non-negotiables for our students here in Weathersfield. This also challenged us, as we knew that there were more programs and materials to thoroughly review and also keep on a timely schedule. Luckily, we had some knowledge of some of these materials and compendiums that were approved, and we knew which ones we did or did not want to look at. Haggerty happened to be one of the approved phonological awareness instructional materials, so we have just met as a committee and are currently looking at a compendium of Haggerty for phonological awareness, UFLI, which is the University of Florida, for phonics, which we just looked at, and also closely aligns to the Shifting the Balance resource that we've talked about. And we will need to review geodes, which includes decodable texts, and then decide between two materials to teach reading and writing collectively. The choices are Bookworms and Wit and Wisdom. The state has since approved additional materials, and our literacy support staff are working again to vet and review these materials to ensure that they meet our high expectations and standards. So as of yesterday, at our monthly literacy meeting, we have decided to follow the route of that compendium and look at the sampled materials for Wit and Wisdom or Bookworms and pilot a unit very soon. So it's been a long couple of weeks, but fun, and the kids are having a blast with it. Before I send you off to Mrs. Distoli, does anyone have any questions about what I talked a little bit about?
Anybody have questions, Liz?
Sure, I have a few. First, thank you so much.
About my slides?
About, yes, about your slides. So one of the, I think-
I can go back.
It may have been Joanne that talked about, I have questions about your slides as well, but I think Joanne talked about the professional development that's needed, was the pillars with the green kind of things. And my question there was, do you feel that you have enough time to get the professional development that you need to really implement this? Or is that kind of like a stretch? Because I hear so much about everything that's continued to be put on the plate, and so I'm just wondering, you know, what the thought is around that.
I can only speak to my personal opinion about this, being a second grade teacher. This is also only the second district that I've ever worked in, and the level of support that we receive as classroom teachers through Dawn and our RCs and LSs and curriculum specialists is absolutely tremendous. When we are given a task, they make sure we're ready.
You have a team rally around you?
We have, yes.
Okay.
That's how I personally feel. I don't know if anyone else wants to jump in.
I think she's very gracious. I think time is always short, right? The elementary teacher is an expert in reading and writing and math and social studies and health. health and science and behavior and parent communicate, right? And so I think we've been really been talking lately about, you know, how much is new? We have a new math program. We wish we could have a new math program for three years to get really good at it, then do reading. We don't have the time. But I think we have great collaborative structures. We have a lot of learning in district, and then that learning happens and is shared with teachers. There's never enough time in the day. So I think that, you know, we are lucky. I think a lot of feedback is we do provide a lot of support and structures to our teachers, but we can always, we're always kind of fighting for time, right? We have three priorities in the district, and there's never enough time. But I think we try to really be thoughtful and make the most of the time that we have.
Sure. May I keep going? I have two more questions. So related to that, there was a slide on costs, and I think it said that depending on which program we go with, the cost would be $300,000 to $750,000. And my understanding is that a lot of the implementation cost, I don't know if this is part of what this is, right? The reading program? So how do we help you, or how do we, you know, reach out to other districts to see what they might be doing? I mean, that's a huge gap for the lack of money that this town has for, you know, the budget. And so what can we do to help with that? What are, do we know what other districts are doing to mitigate that implementation cost? And what would you see as the impact where if you didn't have the funding to do the implementation appropriately, like what would you see that impact to be? And this question is definitely coming because we're planning budget season, and I want to prepare us, you know, to help make this, you know, the asks that we may have crystal clear. And then on top of that, just kind of throwing in, there are so many great comments that were shared and readings that were not in the presentation that I got. I may have just missed a couple of slides.
I went to questions way too fast. I apologize.
No, no, it was, I hung on to every word. I think that would be very helpful to include in this as well. And, you know, there was like the, was it the left brain or the reading brain? Like citing the source for that, not from like a source perspective so much as, well, we're explaining this and we're looking to build a budget, this would be very helpful to have it upfront at some point in the future. And I rest my case on that.
No, that's a great segue. So let me finish the last couple of slides, and we'll come back to questions, because I think cost implications is a big topic. So we have approximately 50 classrooms, K-3. Roughly, we have a budget for replacement, like textbook books, about $36,000. Plus, we have software. The software would continue because they have different tools and software, different grades. The initial cost, and again, we don't have a definite program yet, anywhere from $300,000 to $750,000 for implementation, with an annual cost of $100,000 to $150,000. So yeah, you see this significant cost change. This is another unfunded mandate from the State Department of Education. They have provided Weathersfield a one-time grant for $126,000. But as you see, much of our curriculum materials we've bought in the past haven't had a recurring cost, other than replacement books and adding books, which we always do. And we'll still have those costs. We're going to be buying decodables and replacement books, and we'll have that ongoing cost. But the software, the workbook, and so the state has put in front of us an unfunded mandate. I know it's a one-year grant with considerable costs, district, for, you know, 50 classrooms of our larger piece. And so when we came here for math, we said cost was not something we brought into the equation of making a programmatic decision. In this case, I can't come forward and bring an annual cost of $750,000 to free you for approval. So there are a couple of programs that we've said no to because of the overarching huge cost. So let me just go on to the next slide. And I wanted to say, as we look forward, is that we have a goal around continuously revising curriculum. We fully believe in science of reading. We understand that we have continuous work about improving our reading curriculum and always have. It's not that you do something and you're there. You're always looking at the latest research, materials, and how we can continuously improve our practices. I think in this case, as Dawn mentioned, the local control has been taken away by the state mandate. Fully understand the rationale behind the right to read. Not, we don't, in Connecticut, we have the largest achievement gap in the nation. We have disproportionate achievement outcomes for our students of color, our students of high needs compared to our white students. So the rationale, the why, I think nobody can argue with. I think there has been, no, I think, there has been tremendous talk, superintendents, assistant superintendents across the state around how we are approaching this unfunded mandate. The idea about improving professional development and improving reading scores, absolutely. But I think this has been, for me personally, probably the most difficult curriculum decision and committee we've ever had since I have been here, and the rules keep changing. So the state, you know, went from six programs to nine programs. We did not select to submit a waiver. We knew we had work to do and weren't going to submit a waiver. Those districts that submitted a waiver waited, I don't know, it feels like a year, but a long, long time to get results. So they've been kind of like in status quo. We've been talking about this for a year in selecting material, and we're not there. We now have these compendiums. Well, we would have looked at that a year ago, right? We kind of feel like we've wasted some of our time and our teachers' time, and that's frustrating. We don't have enough time, so that frustration and the rules changed. If we had submitted a waiver, they didn't tell you how they were going to assess it till after it got submitted, right? And I could go on and on and on. But I think there's just a frustration around the process. There are districts across the state that are looking to, are talking to attorneys about taking legal action against the state, about the requirement, because again, in Connecticut, often your curriculum is local control. So I think it is a landscape that's complicated. It is a landscape full of reading wars that has been around for a century, right? So we have that. We have state mandates that change, even the implementation phase and the implementation date continues to change. But we also have a critical issue that we need to improve reading, both here in Weathersfield and across the state. Dawn and I, or we tag-team depending upon availability, we have a network with probably 20 to 30 curriculum supervisors across the district. We meet monthly to share ideas and, you know, so we have an idea of what other people are trying, what they're using. Currently, the only districts using one of the nine programs are our large urban districts like Hartford, Bridgeport, New Haven. They have not seen considerable growth in their scores. On the other end of the scale, we have districts across the state, probably more affluent districts, that have 80% or higher reading, students are reading on grade level, way above the kind of benchmark for the state, and the state said, no, you have to change your reading program. You have to use 109, right? So they're not using data to kind of make those decisions. So it's a really frustrating landscape. It will be frustrating for budget, and I think frustrating for our teacher committee, and I want to thank our leaders that are here today, Dawn for her leadership, our reading consultants, our curriculum specialists, our members of our committee. They've put a lot of time and energy into making a decision because it's not one that we make lightly. There is a financial implication, and there's a huge implication for learning and professional development and a decision that we kind of own for years to come. But I think what I, as I hear them talk and I get feedback and I hear updates, if I think back over the years, there's always been like this excitement and something catches on, and the community's like really gung-ho, and they're like, you know, excited about the implementation. I haven't heard that yet, right? I think we're closer with the compendium maybe. But so the good news, the rules have changed, because I think if we were coming forward with a 109, I would be standing forward recommending something that we're required to buy, but not fully excited to implement. But I think the overall cost implication is an unfunded mandate. I think it's, reading is an important focus area and an area that we, you know, want to make sure we have a head start on. But I think that is something that, some advocacy at the state level, along with other unfunded mandates, last night at Policy and Planning, you know, some of those came up also. There is a long-term implication here. But I just want to make sure that, you know, we are fully behind science of reading and, you know, shifting, and we really believe that professional development, a strong, knowledgeable, skilled teacher is the number one important piece in front of students. No program is perfect, and no program meets every student's needs, but if our teachers have the knowledge and the skill and the support, then we can see success. So we have to not lose sight of that in this larger picture. And why do we do all this work, right? We've talked about the vision of the graduate. We want to make sure our students are strong communicators, problem solvers, and collaborators. And all this work around early literacy is really that trajectory for our students when they walk across the stage with these skills. So that's a little bit about the broad sense statewide. That is why reading wars in Connecticut continue to be in the talk. And every time district curriculum administrators get together, it is always the talk. So, and it's, I think the frustration is felt across every district. So, questions?
You were, you know, saying that, of course, it comes down to the teacher, how well the teacher is trained in something new, how well she knows her students, and basically that's what it comes down to. And this might sound like a really naive question, but is there any way that we can or the state would allow you to kind of realign some of the materials we already have or repurpose them, use them in this new way?
It's kind of the idea of the compendium. So that allows us to use Hegarty, but that compendium idea, again, when the waiver was created, was a definite no. A year ago, it was not one of the six programs, and I've heard from another district that one of those nine programs actually is going to be out of copyright, so don't buy that one because it's going to be out of copyright. And so I think that's been kind of the evolving piece, and so yes, there are some pieces that we've already purchased for our curriculum that we can use, and then pieces that we will add. So I think that is a help to our teachers because the pieces they've already learned and become familiar with are important, and then they can add some pieces versus kind of stopping it all and doing something new. I think that will be helpful.
Anyone else?
Why was there such a wide gap in the, there was the press tag $300,000 to $700,000? What explains the wide gap? You know, I don't know.
So the resources that were approved by the state range from open source resources, where you would have to pay for only the print materials that you would require for teachers to have a manual and things like that. But no, you don't pay for, let's say, the digital access components, right? And then there are programs that have full digital access to everything. They had entire new systems for leveling text that are different from what, how we've leveled our text. They have written their own text in some of them. So that, the $750,000 quote was from the other material that we brought to the table with Into Reading. And if we were to go just for K through three, all in and need all of their materials in order to support implementation, which it would, it would cost $750,000 just to outfit K-3 with the materials that they need. That was a very quick, no, thank you.
So you're considering costs in your decision? Please?
It was absolutely a consideration. I will say that the materials that we're looking at now, along with the Into Reading program that we just looked at, all come in around that $300,000 mark because of the additional texts that you have to buy to support the units that are in the teacher manuals, right? Some of them come with them. Bookworms is an open resource program, but you have to go out and you have to buy the actual books from Barnes &amp; Noble or Scholastic or wherever to get your classroom libraries up to snuff for what you need for instruction. So it all works out to be around that $300,000 to $500,000 mark, depending on which one we pick.
Thank you.
Go ahead. A question. How, you were talking, Sally, about how, you know, we're always replacing and about, do you know off the top of your head about how much the reading program generally, how much of the budget that is each year?
Yeah, that's on the top of your slide. So we spend roughly about $90,000 on different reading software. Our budget's been cut over the last few years, so we spend $36,000 K-6 on replacement reading. It used to be 50. Classroom teachers would say we always need more books in our classroom. So that's kind of our current cost, but that's been pretty stable. But we bought Hegarty one year, but that's a one-time cost, right? That's pretty reasonable. I also want to mention that we've been buying some decodables. You will hear teachers talking about making photocopies. We didn't have as much money, you know, we'd had a larger request, got smaller amount of money, that's the way it works. And so decodables is something we've been trying to get through, but we're looking at a multi-year plan. But you will hear about teachers making copies because that's where we are in the process.
Thank you. Do I understand this, we have another year before it has to be implemented, July 2025?
We have to do a partial implementation next year. So the state has not identified what that means, what grades or what the partial implementation means, and I think that really will come from the committee also. We probably, I want to make a decision with the committee, but it would be my recommendation not to go K-3 all at once, with the state continuing to change its rules and its ideas and, you know, because once we get K-3 done, we are going to be looking at 4 through 6 reading. And so does third grade kind of get grouped with the upper grades? But I think it will really be driven by the committee, the pilot. Obviously, budget will play an implication in that. But we want to be, you know, thoughtful and really by the confidence of the committee and the decision of the committee, I think is really going to help guide what that partial implementation with full implementation the following year.
Are we piloting the $700,000 program?
No.
Okay. No, I, because I would say then if we were piloting it and we liked it, I'd be hard-pressed to tell you not to bring it forward if that's going to bring the best results for our students. It's not about the money, it's about our achievement and our kids.
We didn't eliminate, I will tell you, we didn't eliminate it based on the budget. We eliminated it because it didn't meet our needs. We identified that it was not as strong in the structure of literacy pieces that we've, we felt we needed to supplement, and we felt like the Into Reading offered more of that. So that is, so we did strongly consider it, but it didn't meet our needs and it was exorbitantly costly.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Can you speak to the reoccurring costs that you mentioned, how there's more reoccurring costs as it would be any program you picked? And when you say reoccurring costs, does that mean like the text, like as a workbook that you'd have to keep buying, the new workbooks and like being forced to buy new products like that?
In most cases, yes. Each program comes with its own kind of student book. With the pilot, the students worked in the workbook for most of the grades. There were, I think kindergarten, very little actually in the workbook, similar to math. That's, we might eventually end up deciding kindergarten doesn't need a workbook, we can just give them little paper and notebooks or whiteboards or whatever. But in the interest of not knowing whether or not that would be something that we would continue to need to use, we wanted to make sure that you understood that that's a potential recurring cost in order to make the program work. And then this additional software that we have is existing software. So all of the costs that we currently spend, around $90,000 for our elementary reading software to support practice and additional text options for students and bolster some of the, some of the units in our science and social studies curriculum through our reading curriculum. So all of those would continue to be recurring every year.
I'll ask a couple more questions. A couple more questions. So when the state added all these new other, you know, additional resources, is your impression, talking to other districts, is it because a bunch of districts like got really upset and said, you must include this, you must include this, and the pressure just got so great, they said, okay, well, we'll add? And could that keep happening? I don't know if-
Those are two different questions. The first question, do I think it was because districts pressured them? No. I think, so what happened was they offered the opportunity for districts to submit a waiver. And the districts that submitted waivers submitted them with a detail of the materials that they were using and the effects of that in their districts on student outcomes. In some cases, these waivers were 600 pages long. I mean, these were extensively- I mean, these were extensively written and communicated. The districts who received approvals for their waivers, those materials were considered as compendiums, as a program. So the compendiums that were approved are someone's proposed waiver. And there were nine, nine compendiums that were presented in December. And of the nine, the two that we showed you today are the only two that incorporated the materials that we were already using and have in place.
So in other words, they allowed other districts to use some of these materials, so then they, they're saying, no, you all can do that too.
Yes. But you must use them as they are presented. I do know that some of the publishers are going of, let's say, inter-reading. They were not approved as part of a compendium. So now they're coming back at the state and saying, hey, wait a minute, you can use parts of what we offer with these other things too. So how can you, so to answer your second question, who knows? There could be much more to come, there could be none. It's been a roller coaster ride and I wouldn't be surprised if they continue to come out with more recommendations and suggestions and...
You know, you mentioned in your presentation how important professional development is, and I've been internalizing all this as you're talking, and the frustration of teachers must be tremendous between just getting a new math program to put into effect in the elementary schools. And now I'm going to say this chaos right now, we're trying to find a program that works with our children, gives them that phonemic awareness and the phonics and all the pieces they need. You know, teaching is hard enough, and now this chaos is not helping. I'm upset with the state at the moment for this.
I, I hope, and I can only be immensely grateful for the team that came together to pilot these materials. They came to the table with an attitude of inquiry and curiosity and wanting to do what was right and best for kids. And they knew going in that they were taking that on, on top of learning an entirely new math curriculum this year. Kirsten piloted the math program, so she came in double duty for this one. I'm hoping that we kind of minimized the impact on teachers who weren't part of that pilot committee so that they could dedicate their focus to their, their new learning around math instruction. We've dedicated a lot of professional learning this year during the PD days to making sure that that's just math, right? They're, they're learning and they're working through and figuring out their new programs and what works. Towards the end of this year, we're going to have to make some, some shifts and put some energy towards reading so that we can get them ready for the next level of new learning. But I appreciate that you recognize what a heavy lift this is for elementary teachers. We asked them to do it all.
Yeah, I just, you know, I want to speak to that point with regard to chaos. I think, you know, as a district, we did not submit a waiver, we went for just an extension. And, you know, I think about the districts that submitted a waiver, submitted the 600 pages of documentation, had a meeting with the state, and did not find out until the very early part of December whether or not their waiver was approved. Think about the districts that had their waiver denied and now must embark upon the work that we have already been doing for the better part of the past eight to 12 months. So, you know, again, I think from a perspective of, you know, looking at these programs, I have to say that knowing that our teacher experts are piloting these programs, I feel very comfortable. When I go into a classroom and watch illustrative math and I see it in action, I am overwhelmed at how much good I see. I think regardless of what reading program we ultimately choose, and I would certainly be of the mindset, making sure that our teachers have as much in the toolbox as possible to support our student learners is the absolute way to go. So I just want to say to our reading committee members, thank you. I hear a lot of what goes on either in the conference room, next door to my office or downstairs, the amount of work that has gone on is absolutely tremendous. So I think from a district perspective, we are in a solid place right now. And again, I know, Liz, to your point, the budget, it's going to be a challenge. So, you know, we know we're going to have to get through that too, but at the end of the day, it's all about the kids. That's it.
Yep, thank you. Thank you, everyone. That was excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so next on our board of ed meeting, we will be doing meetings held.
Do you want to raise your projectors up?
Sure.
I want to hear me at my speed.
Can't shout over there? Okay.
Have you ever, oh, he's going to shut it off first. We have a background now.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Okay. Okay. Okay, so we have our Weathersfield Public School Elementary Ad-Hoc Building Subcommittee. Chuck is going to speak to that.
Yeah, so this was our second meeting of this wonderful committee that I'm lucky to be a part of. And the committee was charged with looking at different plans that came up in the first meeting, so potentially how we can improve our elementary schools. I feel like I'm talking to people. And one of them was to improve all five schools. One was to repair all five schools. One, one plan out there was to change our model to three schools, so there'd be three K6 schools, or there's another model that has three schools and dividing it up K2, 3, 4, 5, 6. And then there's another model of going back to what we tried before, which is having four schools and closing one. And the committee members were tasked with giving positives, negatives of each, and then coming up with questions. So that's where we left it off.
Okay, thank you. And Facilities and Maintenance Committee, John?
Yes, so a good segue from the ad hoc committee, so we spent a lot of time discussing the prior referendum and activities around it, including budgetary information and around putting together the correct information to inform and educate the public as we move forward on new elementary schools or renovations around them. I'll give a couple of updates around facilities. We continue to maintain our school buildings, but we still do have challenges. We continue to operate schools with aged systems that need higher maintenance costs, which are resulting in obviously higher amounts of money going into these systems. And it's becoming increasingly difficult to find certain parts to keep these systems operational. The custodial staff does a great job making sure that our schools are maintained and clean, but no matter how much they actually clean them, they still look worn from the amount of traffic that's been on them throughout the years. Major point of contention is finding more staff actually in town to fill some of the positions. For example, an HVAC technician has been opened in town for a long time, we still do not have one. That is difficult, obviously, at this time to hire someone. Update on capital improvement projects. Biggest issue addressed is in the near term is that we need some masonry work done on our aging buildings again, not to beat a dead horse with it. But we do need as well roof repairs at high crests, which are currently pending inspections. And some of the other asks were further improvement projects, including repairing floors and hamper and charles right, as well as possibly new furniture in our classrooms. And last but not least, a little HVAC update, and we're very proud to report that the air handler unit in Chiller at Salistine Middle School were approved by the town council on 12/18 for replacement, and those are in progress. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and then the WEC, our Weathersfield Early Childhood Collaborative. Janice, would you speak to that?
All right. It's pretty apropos in relation to the presentation we had tonight. WEC is the Weathersfield Educate, Early Childhood Collaborative. It seeks to ensure that all Weathersfield children, birth to eight, are healthy, ready for school, and connected to the community. And I thought this was important to read tonight. Why? Ninety percent of a child's brain is developed before they reach kindergarten. Eighty-six percent of a child's life, birth to age 18, is spent with families and the community. Thirteen percent is the average return on investment for early childhood programs. At this month's meeting, Melissa Griffith, a family engagement specialist from Sparkler, a state-initiated free mobile app, explained how Sparkler works in an effort to encourage more families to access the app. And we've heard about Sparkler from Bobby and when she's reported on WEC. This was a little more information. The app is only accessible on mobile phones, as most people have those, even if they don't have access to a computer. It is for adults, not children, but provides parents with information to support their children's development. Providers and early childhood teachers can, however, create a dashboard to set up communication with families using Sparkler information. The app is a resource that has 2,000-plus play activities that have three or less directions and can, you can use materials that are commonly around the house to do them. It has tips for parents. It can connect parents with a parenting coach. It has an ASQ, this is a survey questionnaire screener that connects to 211, which is the birth to three program, and provides parents data about their child that they can bring to their pediatrician. It provides an ages and stages, this is an ages and stages questionnaire. Parents may have real people respond to any concerns they may have as a result of the questionnaire. Melissa reported that a few schools are providing Sparkler training for their kindergarten teachers. I wouldn't want to put that on anybody right now, but it's something to think about. Sparkler is for birth to age six, but can be used with older children in certain circumstances. The great thing is Melissa Griffith, who is so enthusiastic about this, about Sparkler, said she is happy to talk to any group or school, et cetera, about Sparkler. Hint, hint. The aim is for parents to understand how crucial early childhood is to each child's future. We also heard from Ellen, I believe, it's Harris Westky, who is in charge, from the Weathersfield Library, she is in charge of children's services at the library. She discussed their 1,000 Books Before Kindergarten program and shared printed information about it that is available at the library. This initiative emphasizes the importance of reading, writing, talking, singing, and playing with your child every day. Children are rewarded along their journey to the 1,000, their 1,000-book goal, ending with a confetti celebration and the gift of a book of their choice when they reach this goal. The library also has launchpads, which are like Chromebooks but are not connected to the internet, they have learning games. Also, the library provides backpacks for preschool-aged children that contain books and story-related activities. There was discussion about how to get information about the importance of early learning and opportunities out to all people and the importance of increasing preschool enrollment and spots for children. Among other things, this is so impactful for meeting future grade-level goals and alleviating the number of special education referrals. Concerns about preschool space or lack of in the planning of our new and renovated schools were also discussed. So just to emphasize that reading starts literally at birth. It is never too early to be reading, singing, talking, clapping, interacting on every level, exposing children to textile, textile experiences. And hopefully that will help our schools also. And to just understand that it's a, should be a community goal, something our whole community is on board about from birth and on through school.
Okay, thank you, Janice. And we've always said that a great school system starts with a great foundation, and that's where that foundation comes from. Thank you. Okay, and we have Policy and Planning Committee. Matt?
Okay, so the Policy and Planning Committee met last night for a first period of four policy recommendations from Shipman. One of them is tabled, the policy concerning weighted grading and calculation of GPAs due to the fact that since Shipman recommended this specific policy change to adopt, the state board of ed and the legislature again changed some guidelines. We will visit that again as soon as possible. We are moving two of the policies discussed last night to the entire board for a first grade, one concerning high school graduation requirements and the other concerning FAFSA completion. The fourth policy we moved out of committee was one that we tabled at the prior meeting concerning suicide prevention and intervention. We had John Carter offer input on this policy, which was greatly appreciated. A lot of times the addition of a sentence, even in some cases just a word, or a slight change to a form can go a long way when writing and adopting policy. That was the case there. In attendance last night, in addition to the committee members and Michael and Bobby, to offer input, guidance, and perspective for these policy recommendations was Sally Distoli, Sharon O'Connor, and Cindy Bryan. Their input was immensely appreciated. And finally, as usual, the committee's decisions were unanimous. The one of the night was consensus.
Thank you, Matt. All right, we have lots of meetings scheduled, so here goes our social world. Community and Public Relations Committee is on January 10th at 6 o'clock. The Board of Education Town Council Joint Communications Committee is on January 11th at 4 o'clock. Student Program and Services Committee is on January 16th at 6 o'clock. Crepe Council is on January 17th at 11:30, that's their first of this year. Weathersfield Public School Elementary Ad-Hoc Building Subcommittee is on January 18th at 6 o'clock. Human Resources Committee is on January 22nd at 6 o'clock. And Finance and Operations Committee will be on January 23rd at 6 o'clock. Okay, so is there anyone wishing to make a public comment? Please come to the podium and state your name and address. And may I remind you that public comments are limited to five minutes. Okay, are there any board comments? Go ahead.
I just want to read something, and I want to give the author credit. So this is in the reminder, Josh Howard wrote this. It's about the Eagle Swim and Dive Team, the Weathersfield girls' swimming and diving team, proceeded a season for the ages, finishing undefeated and winning a 15th straight conference title before finishing as a runner-up at the Class M Championships. The 200 freestyle relay broke the Class M record and won the state title. So it's been about 20 years since I've been in high school. The girls' swim team is winning when I was there, they haven't stopped. Yep, so congratulations to the girls' swimming team.
Thanks for bringing that up. Thank you. Anyone else? Marjorie?
I attended the Weathersfield Schools Parent Council meeting last week, and as usual, there's always really good questions from the members on that, on that committee. You know, one was basically, you know, what are the district, what are district policies? And where are they? And how are they communicated? And how are they created? And how are they decided? So that was a good conversation, and it could probably be, you know, expanded on how some policies are made just through the administration, through the superintendent. Some are just made through the board of ed, and many, as we are discussing today, are forced on us by the state of Connecticut. But also where you can find the policies and, and, you know, how parents can see them. Another discussion, again, because this is going to be ongoing, is the issue of the kindergarten, change in kindergarten age on the first day of school, and also when are the assessments coming and what is the process going to be? And we discussed that. And also the issue of, is it possible to add pre-K enrollment or spots, which I don't think is, is really possible at this point, but it's an ongoing discussion, given that there's going to be so many more pre-K students next year. Also discussed all the time is elementary school construction, the ad hoc committee, what's going on there, concern over even besides that, the continued improper maintenance of the schools while we plan this out and during the, you know, the next phase, and making sure that there's, you know, enough funds or attention to the schools. More, also an interest in figuring out perhaps an idea of maybe taking sixth grade out or doing some sort of situation where we take sixth grade out of K through six, because we're one of the only schools in the area that have a K through six, and we know there's no room in the middle school. But could there be a possibility when we redo the schools to have some sort of just a sixth grade school or a fifth grade, sixth grade school? And there are a lot of discussion on that. Also concern or just a request, maybe more communication go to parents in some way, maybe through Parent Square, maybe through the board of ed, maybe through the superintendent about important presentations like the one we just had in reading and literacy programs, so more parents know if something's happening. And then there's just, internally, the WSBC was discussing ways they could be more, the PTOs can be more communicative and welcoming to open-choice families at each school, including maybe a welcoming letter when families start in kindergarten, and other ways that they can work through Marcella, who is the open-choice coordinator. And then lastly, Kim Bobbin, I don't know if you mentioned this, Janice, from WEC, she has made since last year and is always, probably going to be an evolving thing, but a packet that goes to new parents, so it could be, it usually will be to new kindergarten parents, but any, any new... parents, but any, any new student who shows up even in the middle of school year, a packet of information about the district, about the town, about rec. And, you know, her question to everyone is, what, what would you want to see in that packet? Knowing what you know now, what would you want to see if you were a new parent or in a new student? How, what information would you like to see in that packet? So if you have any ideas? I mean, she already has one made, but she might have things, she, might be things that she's never thought about. Now, is that, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for board comments? Marjorie, can you, can you share that packet just to see?
Sure.
Okay. And is, there is no unfinished business tonight?
I have a, a couple of comments.
Go ahead.
Wait, put her on the spot. She's ready to move on, Jim. Sorry about that, Bobby. My apologies. I just wanted to mention that the Career Advisory Board sent out an announcement for employers to sign up, and EverSource has already signed up. And as far as the, you know, the funds for maintenance for the buildings, I think Colliers had suggested or recommended that $2 or $3 million would be appropriate for ongoing maintenance, and obviously we're a little short of that. And I think the, I don't know if it was mentioned on the, on the agenda here, but the, I thought the next Facilities and Maintenance meeting was scheduled for the 24th of January. Thank you. Sorry, Bobby.
Okay, no, never.
That is correct. By the way.
That's correct, the 24th?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I add something now?
Mm-hmm.
Since Jim, Jim broke the... I apologize, I wasn't here in December, but in November, Liz and I attended the CAPE Caps Conference, which is a great opportunity for professional development for board members. It was a two-day event, lots of great activity, lots of great workshops. And then we also attended the new board member slash leadership workshops in December, another great event. And just so board members are aware, there is a state statute that says board members need to attend professional development, it is a requirement by the state, it's new this year. So I encourage people to look at the CAPE offerings and try to attend it, there's really lots of great things going on in this state, and you can learn a lot. On January 31st, Wednesday night, actually it's 4:00 PM, Newington Hockey Rink, the Weathersfield High School hockey team is having their annual charity game, and it's going to honor the Keene Foundation, all money raised will go back to the Keene Foundation. They have commemorative jerseys to represent the 9/11 memorial, and we will be having a raffle, 50/50 raffle, raffle baskets, and all money coming in, and will go back to the Keene Foundation. Judy's been notified, and hopefully she's attending. So hopefully board members can come and support that great cause.
What night is that, Chuck?
31st.
It's 4:00, 4:00 PM, January 31st at Newington Hockey Arena. And that's all.
Okay. Anyone else? I think we're done. All right. Can I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Any objections? This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all, and be safe going home.